Common Council for the City of Port Washington. For the roll call, Kelsey, is Mr. Harris on the phone? Okay, well, good, thank you. Then everybody is present, Kelsey. And if we could stand and for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looks like for the consent agenda, we have the minutes for the previous meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Okay, Alderwoman Pastel and Alderman Plaitner. I'm not sure if everybody's got to raise their hand when we vote. I'll look down and then I'll ask for no votes and we'll go from there then, okay? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Genishemus, Kelsey? Mayor's business. There's nothing listed, but I really have a couple of things to add because, right, Tony, I can. Tony and I disagree on this a lot, but I really want to thank the city crew and anybody and any of the crew that is actually doing the snow removal. I was in Milwaukee on Tuesday and again, I was there the Friday before Valentine's Day. They're terrible. The roads in Milwaukee are terrible. I had to be in four-wheel drive in the city, you know? And I come out here and our roads are really good. So I want to thank JD and John Crane and their crews for doing a great job on the roads. Also, one more thank you is to Alderman Benning for his hard work in trying to get this broadcast. I believe we're on YouTube now and finally, we got cable to work, hopefully. Because it's the biggest complaint that I've been getting from people. A lot of the elderly do not have YouTube, so he worked diligently all week to get the cable working. So thank you, Alderman Benning. Oh, great. Officer staff report. The best item on the agenda night. City engineers report.
Pressure. Okay, yeah, I've been asked to report on the, give an update on the bids for the sidewalk installation on Hales Trail. It should be Sunrise Drive and Crestview Drive. The bids were open a couple of weeks ago and discussed at Board of Public Works. They came in a little over the amount that I had budgeted. If we accepted the addendum, the direction that Board of Public Works decided to go was to stay underneath the $200,000 budget by supplementing city staff for the landscape restoration. So I spoke to the low bidder, BMCI, and they agreed to work with the city on that. And so I drafted a change order with them, which would actually eliminate all the topsoil seed and mulch item. The city discussed this with our superintendent of Parks and Forestry, John Crane, and his crews will perform the work in purchasing the topsoil seed and mulch on our own. Other than that, we went through the, we went through the project at Board of Public Works. One of the, two of the aldermen were there and I've discussed the project with the other aldermen and women that were not present and the recommendation of the board was to approve the contract. So I've drafted up the contracts and under the purchasing policy, we're going to go ahead and execute the agreements and start the work. They think they'll, they think that'll be their first project that they work on this year. So when the frost comes out of the ground, they'll be, should be out, I'm guessing that's going to be April. And they thought it would be a four-week project, but I'm guessing it'll probably, probably be more like a six-week project. That's all I have to say about that.
Okay, it's my turn. So I've had a lot of questions on this. It's not really on the agenda night for the council. And from what my, and I'll have a city attorney, if there's any questions. When you lowered it from 213 to 200, because 200 was approved, I believe that's the reason why it doesn't have to come back to council. But if it stayed at 213, it would have to come back to council for the approval of the extra amount. Is that correct, Mr. Eberhart?
That's correct, Mayor. If the bid amount, even the low bid amount in this case, exceeds the budgeted amount, and assuming there was no work done by city personnel, then the amount based on the appropriation in the budget could not be changed unless authorized by a two-thirds vote of this body. And that's because the municipal budget, once set, is a legislative act and it is, in effect, the law unless it's amended. So but for city personnel taking on the, I'm not sure of the exact dollar amount, but the amount necessary to bring the total cost down below the 200,000 budgeted. But for that, it would have to come back for an amendment to that item of the budget.
Okay, and my, I want to find a question. What happens if the council here tonight wouldn't have okayed the increase, then they would have had to try to find the project at 200? I know, I hate to do that to you.
Yeah, I mean, the project could have been rebid.
Rebid.
Re-advertised and rebid. I think that's the most obvious likely path that would have been followed in that case.
Okay, and then I know, I just have a hard time with it because if John Crane is going to do some of the work, to me, it's still over-budgeted because it still costs the city whether we go wages, topsoil or seed. But that's just my view on this, so. I know that I'd rather had this on the agenda, but because it was, came in, it didn't come in on budget, then we are all set with that then. Kelsey, I think Mr. Harris is actually helping somebody. Is there a city clerk's report at all? I know Susan sent me an email in case anybody is interested. The voting for yesterday was 11.06%. There are 85, 8,527 registered voters and there were 943 votes cast, whether they were mailed in absentee or at polls themselves. So I guess 11% wasn't that bad. I looked at some other communities and they were way below 10%. Weather was terrible and a lot of people felt there wasn't a lot on there, but I disagree with them. School superintendent is important and school board is important, so. Is Mr. Harris back? Just wait for Mr. Harris to, his report. If there's anybody here for public appearances and comments when I call it, please step up for the podium. Anybody in the audience that's going to talk, step to the podium. And there is a button to hit for the red button. When the red light goes on, you can speak, so. Mr. Harris, when you're ready, we're ready for the city planning, planner's report, please.
Nothing too much to report, just touch on the plan commission agenda, which is going to be tomorrow night. Eight items on that agenda. The most notable is three agenda items for the proposed Cedar Vineyard development, but fortunately, we'll have a presentation on that tonight.
Okay. Then we'll go on to public appearances and comments. Is there anybody here for public appearances and comments? Okay, anyone step up to the microphone and I will give you the three minutes that we do. Hit the button. It's the one where the little arrow goes down to? Is the red, is the red light on here? No, on the microphone. Okay, very good. Thank you.
My name is Gene Boyer. I live at 1030 West Grand Avenue. I'm not here this evening necessarily as a City of Port Washington resident. I'm also the secretary treasurer of the Port Washington Saukville Rotary Club and here at the behest of our board to ask you to please oppose the proposal by the Parks and Recreation Department on the Beer Garden. We understand the constraints the city is under revenue-wise as well as the constraints, then, that trickle down to each department. We have no issue with, in fact, we congratulate the work that the Parks and Recreation Department does with Kylie and John Crane. Our opposition to the proposal, Rotary as a founding, we celebrated 90 years. In this heat wave we're having tonight, we could walk two blocks over to the harbor and see Rotary Park if we wanted. So our commitment to the city and the parks is, I don't think, in question. We were one of the originals with the Lions and Kiwanis Club to the Beer Garden when it began about a decade ago. This past year, rightly so, the city attorney had some amendments to the waiver of liability. We were able to satisfy that and held the Beer Garden. Of the 10 hours for that Beer Garden, eight hours were rain. We made $15.62. We've had other good years. Annually, we contribute $45,000 to the community, including $12,000 in scholarships to the Port Washington High School community. During the pandemic, just a quick story. As the shutdown took place, the Ozaki County Agency on Aging was wondering if they've had enough funds for Meals on Wheels. We answered their call, delivered seven Meals on Wheels, teamed up with Beanie's, Tellows, Twisted Willow and other restaurants in the area to the tune of $10,500. To date, we have not received one request from the Friends of the Park. Not that we could satisfy their needs, but nor have we received a request from the Parks and Recreation Department for any monies they might need for projects they have. In terms of the proposal itself, it seems to us to decentivize an organization handling the Beer Garden. It is not overwhelming for us. Our motto of Rotary is service above self. We've always handled it well during the pandemic. We didn't have an issue, so I think there are other ways for government and humanitarian, philanthropic, private organizations to partner than this. So thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor, council people. Thank you in advance for your considerations.
Thanks, Gene. Anybody else? Please step up.
My name is Christina Brickner. I'm here with B3. I'd like to read a statement. I attended, I attended the last common council where the Beer Garden proposal was presented. Questions and comments offered by city representatives focused on the following areas. Insurance, distribution of profits, and thanking Park and Rec for presenting a proposal that would address the event application challenges that have been present in past years. I'd like to comment on these areas before a decision is made today. So insurance. I'm curious as to why this proposal is acceptable, given in past years, we've been unable to do the same. We used to be able to sponsor other organizations' events in order to help with the insurance and licensing requirements, assuming our organization insurance allowed it. We were told in recent years this was no longer acceptable. The ability to justify the cost of the insurance with the increased requirements mandated by the city was the biggest barrier to hosting an event last year. The additional legal forms accepting liability for any deaths, illnesses made taking on the event, terrifying. The new requirements should be revisited. Distribution of profits. As we shared last meeting, we use this event as our largest fundraiser of the year. We dedicate 100% of the profits to a specific project each year and work very hard to make the greatest impact we can. We host a run with our event that combined with the Beer Garden has raised more than $100,000 since it started. Our event has funded the construction of the Beer Garden stage, funded the installation of the fitness park in the Upper Lake Park, has offset the cost of the Cole Dock Park railing, the resurfacing of the possibility playground, and a redesign study for the inner urban trail. Last year's Beer Garden purchased in partnership with Rotary a tri-shawl bike, which was donated to Harbor Club to help those with mobility issues riding on the bike again. In addition to the run, we have brought Packer player William Henderson, invited the National Guard to host a climbing wall and obstacle course all day. We've had a beer stein competition with steins we purchased and then extended to all the groups to sell for additional profit two years ago. We invest in live music all day because we know it will receive a return. We rely on that weekend and we rely on that specific weekend to be ours each year. It allows our volunteers to hold the weekend on their calendar and it allows us to maximize profits through proper planning. Every year, I purchase my advertising on Black Friday for the following year. I have banners in hand now for August 21st. Currently, my planning is on hold because of this proposal. I need to be able to count on my event as I have been in past years. I need to be able to control my profits. I need to be able to plan on 100%, not a fifteenth of 50% as proposed now. The event application. Many of you cited that this plan would alleviate the burden you felt over past years working through incomplete application. This tells me there's a problem with the application process and not necessarily the event. You feel it because there's an event every weekend for the Beer Garden. I know this was addressed last year and streamlined process was rolled out, but it has not been tested. Most events last year were canceled. The Fourth of July Beer Garden that was mentioned last meeting is requiring last-minute coordination last year. That was a result of last-minute decisions and last-minute, um, last-minute regulations being enforced for the first Beer Garden of the year. Notice went out to organizations that the Beer Gardens were a go on June 19th. Forms were due July 1st. That's 10 days. The first Beer Garden was July 4th. It wasn't their fault. It's impressive they were able to move forward at all. This proposal just bandages the problem, if there is a problem, rather than fixing it. Now, my questions in addition to these for the proposal. The proposal cites that a Park and Rec employee will be organizing an event and also cites a Park and Rec employee and a Friends of Park and Rec employee will be on site all day for all 15 events. Currently, it's all volunteers organizing and running the events. I thought one intent of this proposal was to eliminate staff time, not dedicate to it. This is, this is set to address fairness and that all, that applications will be submitted each year to be considered. Does that mean that current groups may not be able to participate each year if too many groups apply? How will groups be selected? This proposal lists Friends of Park and Rec as a potential group to host their own Beer Garden. Will they have this opportunity, given that they're receiving 50% of the profits? Food is not cited as responsible by any partner. Is food going to be offered? If so, how's it going to be handled? Currently, we get to control that. I receive a profit from the food that I, that I sell. This proposal also indicates that merchandising will be purchased and sold by Friends of Park and Rec. Are the profits made through these sales part of the profit split among the participating organization? And last week, Kylie represented that 50% of the revenue was based on her research at other Beer Gardens. Can she provide that data? Which community beer gardens are run like ours now and/or as it is proposed? This proposal was put forward by the Friends of Park and Rec without any discussion with the Beer Garden Board. When I met with them a year, a month ago, it was the first I had heard of it and I am a board member. I was also told at that time that it was, I was the only organization not on board. You can see that that's not true. This proposal is going to take away the individuality of each event. It's going to reduce return for those who really make it their biggest fundraiser. It's no longer going to be B3's Beer Garden. It's going to be theirs. It's going to reduce the incentive to do more and be better than the last. Our beer gardens are special. I want to keep them that way. If this proposal is accepted today, I would ask that B3 be allowed to operate as we have on the third weekend of August as part of the Beer Garden series. We have proven we can do it successfully and the city and parks directly benefit from our efforts. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else for public appearances? Dave?
This is Dave Miller, 913 North Webster Street. I'm here also to discuss just a few questions on the Beer Garden proposal. And I'm speaking tonight as far as the Port Washington Lion Club and the food pantry that I would represent for both of those in there. I am similar to what others have said, but I'm, the number one thing that I am absolutely in favor in that, as if we was discussed last time, would be on the, the city and the Parks and Rec and the Friends take over the insurance. If they can handle that, that was our number one obstacle that a lot of the groups found it very difficult to obtain and weren't, it didn't come across as a good risk for what it was going to cost. I mean, a lot of that insurance, you got to remember, is almost $1,000 for a lot of these non-for-profits. And they get this liquor liability insurance and everything was all like $1,000 to use it for one day because they had no other things. And that really weighed in whether that they were going to have it. But I think if you discuss that and we can make that happen, that way, it will ensure that every week, that there will be a nonprofit that will want to put up the expense to kind of go ahead and go with this Beer Garden. So I think if you can get that part to go through, that would be the number one favor of keeping this Beer Garden kind of going around. Is, you know, a few questions that would, that does come up that I would like to ask as you're discussing is the cash tips, because I know it's proposed right now that the Friends of Park would supply all the money. They would do all the drawers. They would then also take all the money back and then the percentage of whatever's decided tonight would come back to us. But it's the tips that I really would want to discuss to make sure that when each individual group is there and someone hands a $20 bill to say, here, this is for your cause. I really love what you're doing. I don't want that to go part of the community pot if that's the way that we're going to go with it this way. So I do believe that each group is still going to be able to do our food the way I ran into it with our food and water funds. I hope we keep this concept because that's what keeps it unique. Each up there, each week is a little different, that, you know, it's not the same food. It's not the same beer and I hope that we can come to that. And I really hope that we're going to keep this uniqueness with each group keeping their choice of beer and everything coming up as well, too. The only request that I've had from everything is if we go ahead with this and there's a percentage taken out from the Friends of Park Recreation. Every member that's come up to me and says, as long as there's nobody paid from the Friends of Park Recreation, that's not a staff to oversee this thing, that's their number one thing they don't want to see happen. If we're all volunteers doing this and they're taking percentage of the money, we want to make sure that the Friends of the Park and Rec are all volunteers as well, too. I've been involved with this community beer gardens for going on eight years now and it's just a great way for all of the non-for-profits to give back, to fundraise, to probably promote our group, give back and have fun while promoting our great parks. I really love how the way our city's beer gardens differ from other cities and it's because it's hosted by a different organization every weekend. That's what makes it unique and I, you know, I don't want to be the, I really want this to keep going. And I do believe that the insurance is the number one way that we can, if that hurdle is going there, that we can at least go the next way because if we have one there every week, that is what will keep it consistent because the problem, the last couple of years, you didn't know if there was one there or not. So if we can get rid of that, solve that one thing and I think, I'm willing to give this a little bit of a shot, but the 50%, I believe we do need to talk about. I need to get, be justified on where that number is actually coming from. I don't mind giving some back, but 50%, there's a lot of disincentive to really do great and it makes it easier to just say, well, whatever, we're just going to show up and we're going to get money from everybody else's. And I really don't want that to happen from any of my groups, so. Anyways, I'm looking forward to hearing your discussion tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask everyone to please sign once they've spoken.
I apologize. And again, when you speak, try to leave, try to limit to three minutes, please.
Yeah, Tom Evans, Stars and Straps Legacy Club, 112 East Main. So I was here last time, same thing. Most everyone hears echo and are the same things. Obviously, streamlining the admin, that's great. Lower the insurance cost, great. Beyond that, there seems like a lot of things that just got thrown at the wall to see what sticks here. We do our own food. We don't do food that anyone else does. That's a unique product that we offer. As far as beers go, we have relationships with the beer providers on our own. We're, we know what to order. They help us out with that as far as what's selling and cost. Entertainment's on this proposal. We have bands that volunteer their time to us. We don't need help there. We're not, and we're not interested in sharing any of that cost or the profit gain from that either. And of course, the 50%, like I said last time, that's just, for us, that's not going to happen. So other than that, you know, hopefully, I'd like to be a part of the planning. I requested that as soon as I heard this initial proposal, that we sit down at the table. We all kind of come up with a thing that works for all of us, rather than just being handed a mandate and that'd be that. So anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Joe, do you have something? Yep, come on up. Three minutes.
Okay, so my name is Joe Burke. I currently reside in Third District. I guess I'll make my point short and sweet. My biggest concern is for the future of this community. So I've done a fair amount of research on the Prairie Edge development. I just, in my own personal opinion, I don't think it's the best for the community. I've done a little bit of research. I think it was approved during Tom Lotte, when Tom Lotte was mayor. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong. I think it would be more beneficial to work with another developer, maybe a local developer. That being said, I'm, I'm only 20, so I don't know a lot, but I don't think it would be a beneficial development to this town or city, but thanks to you guys for your time.
Thanks, Joe. And Joe's done. Anybody else? Anybody on the phone? Okay, that's good. Leave it there, Joe. Again, I'll ask one more time. Anybody else for public appearances and comments? Raise your hand. Hearing and seeing none, we'll close public appearances and move on to finance and licensing, item seven.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the first on finance and license is to consider impossible action on an amendment to the 2021 Capital Improvement Plan from the Fire Department. to the 2021 capital improvement plan from the Fire Department. We had originally budgeted in capital planning for $25,000 for a power load system on a new ambulance. Since we're not moving forward with that new ambulance, there was that $25,000 that's sitting out there that we had approved on the capital outlay.
It's an existing ambulance.
That has.
Dave?
Thanks.
If you do speak though, we'll need you up at the podium, okay, please?
Oh, thanks, chief. I apologize. So long and the short of it is, we won't need that power load system, but we had budgeted in the capital outlay. So there was $25,000 sitting in there that we was going to be unspent. The chief has identified a need for two new thermal imaging cameras to be put on the ambulance, on the fire engines. And that total would be not to exceed $13,000. So this was approved at finance and license downstairs. There any questions?
Okay, any questions?
I move to approve.
Motion by all the women, pastal.
Second.
Second by all the women, betting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? unanimous again, Kelsey, thank you. Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief. Item 1B is from the Parks Department, the purchase of a utility vehicle. We had budgeted $50,000 for a new John Deere mower under capital outlay for this year. The first bid was for $52,000, but we got a, for a trade-in, John Crane was able to get us $37,000 for our existing mower, which left an unallocated $12,000, which he's proposing that we spend for the purchase of a new utility vehicle for summer staff to be using around the city for work during the summer months. And so that would, again, unchange the amount of capital outlay that we had, that we had budgeted, so it'll be about $49,000 where we had budgeted 50. So this was also approved downstairs of finance and license.
Okay, any further discussion? In a motion, please.
I move to approve.
All the women, pastal again.
Second.
All the women, gasper. Again, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? unanimous again, Kelsey, thank you.
Next is consideration of possible action on a sewer rate increase. I'll let Mr. Bueller.
Okay, Strand Engineering, as you well know, completed a wastewater study last year for the most part. And we're looking at capital upgrades over the next two to three years of most likely $5 to $7 million to get our plant in great condition again. Right now, we've got a lot of 31-year-old equipment down there. And so what we're asking for this year is a 3% across-the-board rate increase. We were going to ask for more than that, but with the elimination of summer sewer credit, which is equivalent to like a 2% to 3% hike, we're only going to be asking for 3% this year. And I attached a chart that Strand Engineering included with their report in the last year. And looking at scenario number two, the average impact to a rate user for just this 3% increase is less than $3 per user. And if you go out to 2023, it's less than $8 per user. So keep in mind, these are fluid targets, and depending upon the final design of the plant and the exact equipment and processes chosen, these numbers are subject to change. But, you know, for this year, we're just asking for 3%.
Thanks, Dan. Alderman Sigwar.
Dan, what is the allowable profit of the utility from the PSC? What do they allow you to, when you have a rate increase, it has a built-in profitability number?
Wastewater is not controlled by the PSC. Water is controlled by the PSC, but not wastewater.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Other words, is this a break-even number, or is this a 3% profit number? Is it a?
Well, the way I look at it is, we're building towards what we're going to need to break even, once we have, you know, that loan payment on the $5 to $7 million upgrade. So we're building towards that.
So there is no built-in rate of return?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, I guess, can you just follow up? What we talked about earlier is, we had a rate increase last year, we've got this proposal, you anticipate one next year. What were those numbers, or what was the anticipated number for next year, and what was last year's number?
Last year was roughly across-the-board 5% to 6%. This year will be 3, and we're anticipating another couple increases that might total as much as 15. So, but the total increase, like I said, impact to each user is, you know, less than $8 if you look at the 2023 increase, all the way out, so.
And this is used primarily to fund the recommendations from the study to bring our plant up to current standards required by the B DNR and for efficient operation, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then can you just mention how we, how these rates with these increases compared to surrounding communities?
If you look at, if we were to go to like the 2023 increase right away, we would still be lower than I believe Cedarburg and Grafton, where they are currently at right now. We don't have the chart updated right now, I'm going to get that to you, but I think we would be like in the middle of the pack if you did a comparison.
Thanks, Dan.
All the women, pastal. Same question I had. Okay, anybody else?
I'll move to approve.
Alderman Platen, there's the motion.
I'll second.
All the women, pastal. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? unanimous again, Kelsey.
Next is the review and approval of budget and finance policies to create a budget transfer policy. Currently, we don't, the city does not have a policy that governs the transfer of funds once the common council approves a budget in November. So the city administrator fortunately has taken it upon himself to create procedures that would dictate how those funds get transferred within and without departments. In your budget, in your council packet, you'll see that there are, you know, four main, three or four main procedures that he's outlined. The first would be that budgets that are transferred within a department, the city administrator has the jurisdiction to transfer those funds within the same department and fund. If we're talking about interdepartmental and moving across departments, those funds that have been allocated, the department head and the city minister, the department head is impacted by that transfer, as well as the city administrator would have discretion to transfer those funds. If anything goes above the total budget expenditures, or there's changes to staffing levels, or part or full-time equivalence, the common council would have jurisdiction to make the change there. Transfers that are less than $1,000 would not be necessary under this new policy. And if there is a capital improvement, that up to $25,000 within the capital outlay, the city administrator would be, would have the power to transfer those funds within the same department. One additional ad the Finance Committee did discuss was that anything that would, that we would not allow, the movement of funds between the capital and the general operating budget. So that, that was in addition that the Finance and License Committee made to this, that we would not allow the transfer of funds between capital and general operating budget. But the Finance and License Committee did approve this.
Okay, thank you.
So thanks for your work on this, Tony, we appreciate it. I'll move to approve.
Alderman Platen, there's the motion.
Second.
Alderman Gasper is the second. Any further discussion, any questions for Tony? Alderman Sigwar.
Just the last thing you said, Jonathan, is that no transfer between general operating and capital going to be incorporated in this policy?
Yes, it will, that is the intent.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? unanimous again, Kelsey.
Next, you'll see the adopting a 2021 license and fee schedule for the city of Port Washington. Really, it's just, there's a standard rate increase across several line items, but they're very small and minimal, really just to cover staff, time, and use. Main item I would maybe direct your attention to is the last page of that license and fee schedule, where we've introduced the fee of $500 to hold a special council, board, committee, or commission meeting. So those meetings that are not generally, that's part of a normal schedule, there would be a $500 cost to hold a board, commission, council, or committee meeting.
Whoever came up with that, thank you, because city staff and councils spends way too much time coming back and back again, and that's got to be paid for. Yeah, thank you.
I have a question, what's this pharmacist's permit for $10? Do I have to pay $10 a year to be a pharmacist?
Well, you didn't know that? That means for all these years, you have a surcharge coming. Actually, that's on the books, but that's going to be taken off the books with the recodification being finalized. The state has preempted that field, and so you no longer, if you ever have to pay the city a, there are some unusual, similar provisions in our code.
I didn't see any.
Don't lose sleep over that.
I didn't see any attorney fees, you know.
There were, you are adding a lame duck fee.
Oh, fine, and that's what, $500?
Yeah.
Perfect. Hey, if you really need it that bad, you can have it. So can I have a motion for this, please?
Move to approve.
That was Alderman Benning.
I'll second.
Alderman Pastal, any further discussion?
If I could, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, that's to approve resolution 2021-01, along with the license and fee schedule.
Thanks for clarification. Alderman Benning, that's good. Alderman Pastal, you agree with that? Okay. Questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Again, Kelsey, unanimous. Okay, we're moving on to item eight, Park and Rec Board. The big item of the night, besides the sidewalks. So who's going to take this? Consideration of possible action proposed, 2021 Beer Garden Operational Plan. There you go, thank you.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you to all the groups that are here tonight to give your feedback and, and all that you do for our community. I don't think there's any doubt that you guys, you guys and everybody that supports our community does a lot. So you guys really, thank you. I just wanted to start with that. And then I guess I presented to you tonight just more of a budget and hours sheet to take a look at of all the time and effort that the Parks and Rec Department puts forth, just to provide that, those numbers in front of you as requested. So I just wanted you guys to kind of see that and take a look through. But tonight, I just wanted to kind of echo what we talked about last week and what was presented. So the proposal, it hasn't changed, that's still proposed. And there is, like, I guess I just want to try to have you guys communicate if there's any questions in that, nothing has changed with the plan. And I'm here to answer any questions and that, that you guys have.
Thank you, Kylie.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could suggest maybe how to move forward, I would just touch on kind of some of the concerns that were brought up last time. Probably the first one that we can address in short order is the insurance piece. And then from there, we can talk about revenue sharing, along with any other concerns that are brought to light.
That sounds like my cue. Thank you, Tony. When you met on February 2nd and postponed discussion of this matter until this evening, you directed me to answer some concerns and questions about liability and liability insurance with respect to the beer garden events. We met with the city's insurance advisor, Tony Matero, who's present this evening, and I, city staff, Kylie, city administrator, myself, and the city clerk met and, for an extended period of time, and talked about the insurance issues and related topics. I sent all of you a memo earlier today, and if you're like me, reading the provisions of insurance policies is a lot like watching paint dry, maybe even less interesting than that, but not to denigrate an entire industry, Tony. But Tony was great, as he usually is, he came armed with lots of good experience and suggestions, and more than, above and beyond the Call of Duty, canvassed other communities and what their insurance requirements are for special events, and just brought a wealth of, you know, real-world knowledge to the discussion. So Tony, thank you. You came through as usual. The summary of the insurance considerations under the proposed new Beer Garden Operational Plan are simply these. I'll hit the highlights and then offer my conclusory opinion. Under the new proposed operational plan, the sort of umbrella organization, this Friends of Port Washington Parks and Recreation, would be the sole organizer of the Beer Garden event, they would play host to the Beer Garden event. And when I say Beer Garden event, I think this will be part of the discussion, but let me be clear about what my comments are directed toward. When I say Beer Garden event, I mean those beer gardens that are held at Picnic Area 6 in Upper Lake Park. The city and its Parks and Recreation Department could decide, I suppose, to host, to have beer gardens, to allow beer gardens to be held at other picnic areas among the 30 parks within our fine city. But I think everyone would agree that Picnic Area 6 with its facilities is, is the prime location for beer gardens going forward. So the Friends Group, the Friends Organization would be the sole organizer, they would host the event. The civic groups, unlike past practice, would not be deemed the host, or hosts in quotes. The Friends Group would obtain a single blanket special event insurance policy, rather than all of the individual civic and charitable organizations obtaining their own separate policies. The Friends Group would be the primary insured party under that blanket special event insurance policy. The city would be named as an additional insured. Volunteers, who would consist of members of each of the civic groups or organizations who would agree to do so, would staff the event. And because the volunteers would be deemed to be performing acts, that is, selling and serving beer in particular, on behalf of the Friends Organization, then Tony advised that the Friends liability coverage would extend to those volunteers. Couple of other footnotes, it's important to note that there would be no coverage for the civic groups as groups, because they would really have no need for it under this operational plan. They would provide volunteers, and the volunteers would be covered. Therefore, the civic group itself need not have duplicate coverage. And there would be no coverage for any injured volunteers, because the special event insurance liability policy is not a workers' compensation policy, and workers' compensation policies exclude volunteers in the first instance. So we had further discussion about the fact that the city's general liability insurance policy, the one we have now, the one we've had for years and will have years into the future, would cover claims relating to negligence arising from the use of the city's parks and facilities for a beer garden. But again, the city's policy would not cover volunteers, because the volunteers would not be acting on behalf of the city in staffing or staffing these beer gardens. The city is simply lending its parks and facilities for the purpose of the beer garden. And then, so the Park and Rec Department, not the Friends of the Park and Rec Department, but the Park and Rec Department itself would serve as the event sponsor, would promote and market the beer gardens on the city's website and other social media platforms. And I'm not exactly clear, but it seems to me that between the Park and Recreation Department and the Friends of the Park and Rec, one or both of those entities would be providing an individual who would function as agent under the alcohol beverage license, and he or she would be responsible for monitoring the beer garden operations, including the actions of the volunteers in, in selling and serving alcohol beverages. One final point, again, thanks to Tony Matero. One final point, again, thanks to Tony Matero. We now know that under both the existing Beer Garden operations, operational plan, and under the new proposed plan, the prescribed minimum liability coverage, that is $2 million, is, is adequate and is not excessive when compared with other communities. Now, make no mistake, other municipalities do, in some cases, require a lower liability insurance limit for special events. But I think what it is absolutely true to say is that the special events in various communities are, you know, rated based on their individual risk profile, so that if you're serving alcohol beverages or not, if you, the event is held in close proximity to a street, or highway, or parking area or not, whether there are displays of fireworks, bonfires, whether there are amusement rides offered, whether there are use or demonstration of motorized vehicles, whether it's cars or helicopters, whether there are the use, display, or handling of live animals, whether there are inflatables like, you know, these bounce houses, or whether there are rock climbing walls, water slides, dunk tanks, the whole array of what special events look like in this part of the world, all of those are rated separately from an underwriting and risk perspective. And so the beer garden in Port Washington in the month of July, for example, might carry with a greater risk from an insurance standpoint than a parade and slinger, say, in May or June. And so based on the totality of circumstances presented for each event, that really what goes into the setting of the, the assessing of the risk and the setting of the policy premiums. So I'm comfortable that the, under the new proposed operational plan, the city's interests are protected from an insurance standpoint. And I would also say that it is my strong recommendation to retain the minimum liability coverage for these type of beer garden events at $2 million. Whether that coverage is provided by one single commercial general liability policy or as a combination of a general liability policy for $1 million plus an umbrella policy for another $1 million, and/or an alcohol beverage endorsement for $1 million, however you get to $2 million from an insurance standpoint, I think it's essential that that minimum liability limit be retained, whatever this body does tonight or in the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Eberhard? Alderman Sigwar.
Very simple one, Eric. Apparently, the beer gardens are becoming more generic. In other words, our Coannis Beer Garden on August 29th really isn't the Coannis Beer Garden, it's really the Friends of Park and Rec, okay? Because Coannis will not be sponsoring the event, our International will not provide insurance for us. So we are, as far as our club is concerned, uninsured. But we really don't have an involvement, other than the individuals working the event. So is our club being exposed or not?
No, Alderman Sigwar, under the new proposed operational plan, if your club provides volunteers to the beer garden event, you're covered under the Friends of Port Washington Parks and Rec's liability policy.
...for 15 minutes, press one.
So no, you're, the members of your group who volunteer to staff the event by selling beer and food products, they're covered? For liability purposes.
They're not covered for injury.
That's correct. That's my understanding. If they're injured...
They're just not covered.
They would not be covered. If they were obviously employees of an entity, organization, they would be covered under workers' comp, but that is not the case.
All right. Okay. And Patrick, do you have a question?
Yeah, Eric, you mentioned you'd like to keep this $2 million liability coverage. Is that, is that comparable to what the groups would have had to go out and get on their own in the past? The level of, the level of coverage, I mean.
Yeah. We, we increased the level of coverage in the last year or two, and a few years before that, we increased the minimum liability coverage for the largest event that the city hosts, which is Fish Day. And there was an outcry, I think it's fair to say, when those liability limits were increased as they translated into higher premium costs. But to end where I started, I'm, I'm comfortable that that's an, that's an appropriate amount of minimum liability insurance to require. I should say this too, because I heard a few of the commenters earlier, some of them portrayed the insurance premium of approximately $1,000 as too costly, and maybe it is for a particular group. However, I'm the person who reviews all these certificates of liability insurance for the various organizations as they're provided, and I can't see any clear pattern to it. There is, it is the farthest thing from uniformity. So some groups, for whatever reason, don't pay any additional insurance cost for alcohol beverage endorsement or coverage, which is sometimes called liquor liability endorsement or coverage. They just don't pay anything, anything over and above their normal annual insurance cost. Some groups pay $300 for an endorsement for a single Beer Garden Day event. Others pay 500 or 800. But the one thing I do know is it is not uniform, and the city has no part in that. The city obviously cannot dictate or set insurance premiums and, and how they affect individual insureds or individual groups. So I really can't speak to that, except to say it varies widely among organizations in my experience.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Alderman Postle, you're looking a little, like you want to have a question? Okay. So not sure how you guys want to do this, so we could use a motion and a second. If there is no motion and second, then item is defeated, correct?
Well, that, Mr. Mayor, that was just the insurance piece of the puzzle. I'm not sure what else.
I'm looking at the consideration and possible action proposed 2021 Beer Garden operational plan.
So that, that's the insurance piece of the pie, as I say. I don't know, I recall looking back at my notes, that there was a discussion last time, we've heard some of it again this evening, about other groups, groups that might want to hold such beer garden events on their own, not, not through this umbrella organization of the Friends of Park and Rec. We can certainly discuss that. I'm not sure what the pleasure of the council is in that respect or on any other issues.
John, go ahead. Alderman Sigwar.
I'm going to address this to Kylie. She looks like she should sit down. Kylie, could you run us through a scenario where Coannis is going to host the August 29th Beer Garden, not host, we're going to participate in the August 29th Beer Garden? So you're going to sit down, you or someone from the Friends, I don't know how that works, will sit down with our chairperson, Michael Gasper, and you will discuss what beer is going to be served, what the entertainment is going to be, what food will be served. Is that correct?
The Friends of Park and Rec would be in charge of those operations and working with all the participating organizations on all of those details. The Parks and Rec Department would be more involved in just facility, facility rental. So we, the, the role kind of of the, the, the City of Port Washington Recreation and Parks Department would be to set up the facility and make sure it's prepared, just as we do for other operations. And then as far as the Coannis Club or just any other, any other clubs that would, would participate in this, they would communicate those operations with, with the participating groups. And I think it's just important to note that all, all of those groups would be involved in the process to, to make that, this a successful event. And it would be a very collaborative, collaborative way to make a successful event series in, in the end of the day. Did that answer your question?
Sort of. So in other words, if we want to serve drummies that we're going to do on the grill, and we could do that.
That, yep. And that would be more of the, the Friends of Park and Rec would be working with food operations or beverage, but again, they would be taking all those expenses and purchasing the beer. But you, you would have a say, or we would like to have all of the groups involved in having a say on what that beer is, or what that food is, or what that band is, and having a collaborative effort on that front, so that you don't lose that uniqueness. Because it's been echoed out, that's important to all the groups to have, to have a unique, a unique experience every week. But the volunteers would definitely, are requesting to have the volunteers there would be your responsibility. So there would be an agreement in place, and, and the Friends would have to put that together, where Coannis Club would sign an agreement that says, I have 20 volunteers, and we are going to be here for this day. And I know it's been communicated out that everybody is afraid that it's just the Friends of Park and Rec Beer Garden. Yes, it would be the Friends of Park and Rec Beer Garden, but everybody collectively, collaboratively, together would be, would be marketed out. And so your Coannis Club logo would not be lost within that. And, and that would still be prevalent within the day of you, that you guys volunteer.
One last question for Kylie. In other words, the uniqueness of what we want to do would be sort of like negotiated with the Friends?
Yeah, I would, you could definitely put it that way, for sure. I think that their, their goal is not to, to take away the uniqueness or take away from all, all of your guys' visions, but just to, to enhance that and to make it unique to you, but also sustainable and efficient, and, and really address all those issues that have been presented again and again to the council.
Okay, and then lastly, there's still a mention in the policy of a lottery for dates. Is that, is that intended to happen annually, so the date will change for a club?
Really? So the date really doesn't matter in the end of the day?
Sure does.
I would, I mean, the, with this proposed plan, the date doesn't matter as much. I, I guess that's, if that's what you like to hear, but because you're volunteering and it goes, it's all together. And I think that's where, where we need to look at it, is it's not the, it's not I, 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 it's team, team, team. And that, like, you're, you're volunteering together with everybody in, in this proposed plan, so.
And finally, finally, I promise, Mayor.
Go ahead, John, there's no problem.
Last year, Coannis opted out of our beer garden, and we did that because we didn't feel we had enough strength within the club to maintain the protocol that was being required. It was excellent, okay? There were excellent beer gardens, and there were lousy beer gardens. I understand that, okay? We didn't feel we could meet the standard, so we opted out. So what happens this year if Coannis says at some point, okay, we're not going to provide labor for that weekend? My preference would be that there'd be no beer garden.
If, that would be still a beer garden held, and we, there's a lot of other participating groups within this community. There's a great amount of, of clubs and groups that would like to participate in this opportunity, so having kind of a bench, if you will, of those, those participating groups, so that if your Coannis Club doesn't feel comfortable, let's just say, you would have a date a month out or two weeks out, and you would have to say, we, we're in or out. And then if you're out, then it would go down the line to other, other groups for that opportunity. So that would be pre-set up for a fail-safe of that situation.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Alderman Tierney.
Kylie, maybe you could address a couple, a couple of questions that I heard here today from some of our speakers that, I mean, resonated with me to a certain extent. I think if we have, if we have a group that comes in and they have volunteer bands that are going to play for them, seems to me like that's an advantage to them, but they're not getting an advantage necessarily in their profit from it. Also, the question about the tips jar, I think, is, is a pretty legitimate one, because I know, I've seen people that are, for instance, if they support a veterans' organization or something like that, they're going to put more money in that kind of a tip, and it almost seems like that should stay with the group.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I think another one is that, maybe you could just address, some of these groups really put all of their, this is their big thing, this is their big, going to be organization, and are they going to, do you think they can make the same kind of profit that they have in the past?
I think it's important to note that with, with doing it streamlined, you can really reduce the expenses within, within the future of, of this operating series, so you can get that, that base of expenses really low down, and you can also have people work on sponsorship, so that you can hopefully cover all the expenses. And that would be the goal of the Friends of Park and Rec, to cover all the expenses through sponsorship and getting that as low as possible, so that the, all, everybody can, and, and it's not, it's about the community, about giving back to the community. So I think, like, when we, we talk about beer gardens and, and this group making money or this group making money, we need to think about it as putting money back into the community, and how we can do that most effectively and efficiently, and address all those, all those issues to make this come to fruition. So it's not about each group making money in this proposed plan and, and it going back directly to their group, it's about bringing it back into the community. And, and this is, this is a city facility, and it's important to note that this is a city, city facility that we manage and we, we oversee and we make possible for the community with a lot of other efforts. What was the other parts of your question?
Maybe the tips jar thing?
Yeah, and that would be something more, I think, to get into like every single detail. It can definitely be picked apart, like any plan or any operation, any event can be picked apart and said, what about this? What about this? What about this? And that's why I think it's, it would be a great idea to try this out and then see how it goes, and we can, we can reevaluate after a year's time to see if there's a better way to operate it. But with a tip jar and, and things like that, we, the common council or you guys would be supporting or potentially supporting the Friends to operate this, this event series. So I think those, those responsibilities and those decisions would be held with, under the Friends of Park and Rec, to collaborate with all of the, the organizations. But I can definitely see that, that those tip jars and that tip money can go back in, and it can be shown as, you know, B3 Lines Club, Food Pantry, whoever is participating and volunteering, and having that really front and center, and saying, give back to these, these organizations, like, and why couldn't we have a, a tip jar that, or, or that to support, support them up there? I don't think that's like the goal, is to take every single dollar, but it's how can we support everybody in the future of this.
So obviously, the current way we're doing things is not sustainable. That doesn't necessarily mean I support the plan as it's on its face this evening, because I do think there are a lot of good points, having, from the groups that have spoken here tonight. And having said that, there's a lot of groups that aren't here tonight that have never held a beer garden, have never been allowed to hold a beer garden, because those dates have always been spoken for, right? And I think, so that's one thing that I think gets lost here, the groups that aren't here or don't have a voice in wanting to hold a beer garden. So that, I have a, I have a really difficult time, and we don't hear from those groups because they've never been allowed to participate. The other concern I, I still have, and I guess I would hope that Mr. Myers would comment tonight, this evening, that the Friends Group can in every way, shape, and form commit to this, these, this program.
...for 15 minutes, press one.
So that's the other concern that I have. Lastly, I still see Alderman Benning has a long list of questions as well, that I'm, most of them are mine, and that would be the shared revenue. So I think that 50% is, is steep, but I do think there's a good plan here. But on its face, I can't support this plan as it's written down this evening. Thank you.
Alderman Benning, you next?
Yeah, so Kylie, I know that you're reacting to some of the issues we've had over the years and, and even into last year, and I, I didn't attend all of them, but I know that even in the COVID world, we had some groups that weren't wearing masks, you know, they weren't following our COVID operational plan on top of everything else. So I applaud you for, for taking a look at this thing. I, I think that, you know, you tried to put together a COVIDer plan, but it seems to... to not be a cooperative plan. And I'm not sure quite why, at this point, we're hearing a lot of, just not coming together on it. Listening to this, you know, I think it's, for me, it's a bit confusing when we have the Friends of Park and Rec, and the Park and Rec Group, which is a city entity, and the Friends of Park and Rec, which is not a city entity. Who's on first? Who's on second? You know, then you've got all the other service groups and things like that. Again, I don't know what our motion here tonight is. You know, are we moving to task the Friends of Park and Rec, and turn over the management, the operational activities, to the Friends of Park and Rec? Are they replacing what was mentioned before, the Beer Garden Board? You know, so, and you're shaking your head no, which, so I'm confused, again, who's on first, what's on second type of thing. There's a lot of different entities here, and it's not clear to me who's going to be accountable, where the money's flowing through, who's working with who type of thing. So that's where I'm confused right now. The cost sharing concerns me. I hear what you say about giving back to the community, but I think each of these groups was founded on a different focus, a different purpose, you know, and they have their things that they want to do. And I celebrate that, because I've been involved with a lot of different ones through the years, and myself. And the last thing I want to see happen is people start walking away from doing these kind of things, because they're frustrated, and they're just not, and that's what will happen, I'm afraid, type of thing. I think the other thing that I know, we've talked about this, you and I have, and others, you know, we're talking about the traditional beer garden as we know it on Saturday afternoon and evening. But what happens if I want to go host a beer garden, you know, for the Dan Benning Foundation on a Wednesday night? What, you know, do I fall under the Friends of Beer Garden operational, you know, I got to work through them, or work with them? I think that needs to be clarified. I know I need that clarified, on what we're doing as a council, what we're doing as a city around that activity. And then lastly, I think we've talked about dates here a little bit. I still would really like to see us start sooner in June, and you and I talked about this, and we don't agree on this, but I think trying to do beer gardens in October generally doesn't work. The weather doesn't cooperate in Wisconsin. And if we truly do have enough groups that want to do beer gardens, we ought to be looking at starting in June rather than July, if we're going to go forwards on that one. So you can comment, or not, on those, but I'm just struggling with what we're voting on, what we would be voting on. I know what you've got written, but I know there's just a lot of question marks I have. I know my peers here have got some of those kind of things. We're getting to the point where the urgency is getting very, very high, because of the timing and things like that. But I think we just got to figure out who's on first, and what's on second. If it's, if we're turning this over to the Friends, then let's turn it over to the Friends, and get out of the middle of it. You know, let them run it, and go from there. But I just think there's such a big disconnect that we're going to take something that could be very beneficial, and it's going to fall apart, while we're trying to fix something that, and I mean, there was issues. You know, people are not following the rules and guidelines and things like that. Enough said.
I don't know, we're moving right down the line. I'll go next, and then we can go down the last three.
Can I just comment on that?
You may, yes.
So to your point about, like, what could people use on the facility on Wednesday, or Friday, or every other date than Saturday? That would have to be a policy drawn up from either council or the Parks and Rec Board for use of that space, and it would have to be clearly, a clear policy, I guess, of what that would look like. So that would have to be in place, I guess, of what they would do or not do, the Parks and Rec Board, to take action on the usage for that. And I know you talk about June, and going into June, that space really is for the community too, for people that want to hold weddings, or picnics, or whatever, private events, and I think it's really important to have those spaces for the community. And so, and making this a larger event, I think, is not the right time to do that, but could be re-approached in the future. And then, just what does it look like if we don't, or not we, but the common council does not vote forward to this? I just want to give it more of a clear picture of, like, if you guys are not in favor of turning over, or motioning and turning it, this operational plan over to the Friends of Park and Rec, then what happens? You know, so that's a question that I think is important to answer, is what happens if we aren't? And I can provide some feedback on that. Tonight, I did provide all of the, just what our department offers, and within that, there's a lot more, I think, than what I could lay out there, and then, as well as other city staff departments that are involved in this, is not in this, and it can definitely be expanded. So this is a very minimal amount of hours and subsidized cost, I guess, that is presented. So it's important to note that I don't think our department should be promoting, or be this face for doing all this work. And so that would essentially then go back to what we are, our department does offer, which is facility renting. And so we definitely have policy and procedure, and the events manual has the policy and procedure, and we would go over to making sure the facility is ready with grass cutting, and having that available for use. And it would be first come, first served, start January 1, and whoever would like to rent out that space, based off of our fees, and then, and kind of going from, off of there. So it could be rented out 45 times for a beer garden, if that, and if we go in the direction of not passing the torch, per se, to the Friends of Park and Rec, or partnering with a 501(c)(3) to oversee operations of a beer garden. And then the Parks and Rec Board, or the Parks and Rec Board and the Parks and Rec Department would step away from overseeing operations of the beer garden, and providing all that we do to make this a successful event series.
Thank you, Kylie. I just want to bring up a couple of things that Alderman Benning said, you know, that maybe one or more groups weren't wearing masks. If that's true, they don't get, they don't get, they don't get the beer garden issue. We...
And to be clear, I wasn't at one, but that was the stories I heard.
If there was, we proposed that last year, and we voted on it, and they shouldn't get a date. Also, everybody's got their own little charities, and that's my whole thing, is that I understand, you know, Friends of Park and Rec might want to do something. I have my own personal charities, you know, I give to certain things, whether B3 wants to give to this, or Rotary wants to feed people. I think that's where it should be, that you have more variety in where the money goes. That's just my personal view. I'll just move down the line. The three on the end here did not speak yet, so...
I guess I'd like to see us give us a try for at least a year, see how it goes. I am skeptical on a couple of things about it, but I think it's worth giving it a try. There's been concerns about, you know, the 50% fee, but essentially it's taking all your overhead out of it, that you don't have to worry about that, that's all included in that 50% fee, that, or that 50% amount that Friends and Park and Rec is getting on their cut, or getting on their end. So they're not getting 50%, because a lot of your overhead is in that, too. There was a concern of, what if, what if our band comes and performs for us for free? Well, I am, under the assumption that there's going to be generally a set amount of budget for musical acts for each week, and there would be nothing stopping your band from donating their fee back to you at the end of the night. So that's fairly easily resolved in that respect. Yeah, I guess, I'm not sure this will work, I'm not sure it will be a success. I am still very skeptical about the month of October being a good month for beer gardens. I think we're going to find that that probably doesn't make sense to do beer gardens that much, because it's too hit or miss on the weather. But I'm willing to give this a try, at least for a year, and let's see how it goes.
Thank you, Alderman Gaspere. Alderman Newmeyer, do you have anything to say?
I like the organizational aspect of it, but I do have a question about the incentive for the groups, if they're losing so much of their profit. I've worked groups like this before, and you put your heart and soul into it, and if you're not recouping what you're putting in, I would be afraid some of these groups are going to walk away. I think this could be finessed a little bit more before we make it an ordinance. I'd like to see it come back, and see if we can't work some of these issues out. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, Alderman Postle?
Kylie, you put a lot of time into this, and thank you very much, but there are a few things that resonated with me here tonight. I understand that if everything is happening as one collective group, you have multiple transactions going with the same suppliers over and over, you might be able to reduce expenses. However, I'm concerned about all of these groups losing their individuality, and that is going to reduce the heart and soul that's put into all of these fundraisers. As listening to you, I kind of see you and Park and Rec as the wedding planner, which might be okay if you're dealing with one wedding. Now you're pushing 13 weddings all at the same time for you to manage and coordinate, and each one of these weddings has a very well-meaning future mother-in-law involved. And that's what I'm very concerned about. Another thing that resonated with me is you had said, instead of "I, I, I," it should be "Team, Team, Team." That team needs to begin at the bottom. And these people who are sponsoring these events, those are the people who need to come together and work with you to put together a plan that's going to work. Right now, I think there are too many details that are missing, and I would like to see more of those details reviewed and documented before I could make a choice.
Thank you. So for the council, of course, you can approve it, you can table it, you can reject it, you can also approve with some type of modifications. So... If there's no motion?
Mayor?
Yes. Oh, John?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I support the plan from a concept perspective, but I oppose it from a details perspective. So my only concern is that I don't think it's quite ready for primetime. I think it has a lot of really good ideas that help a lot of smaller groups, but I can tell you who it doesn't help. It doesn't help the nonprofits that have international connections. It doesn't help them at all, okay? Who it helps are the smaller groups, so it's sort of, kind of a good idea, but I think it's got to go back to the drawing board. And my one comment would be, everybody's concerned about the 50/50 cost-sharing ratio. The only reason that anybody would be concerned about it is because we don't understand it. I mean, maybe there was $100,000 earned over 15 beer gardens. Maybe there was. Maybe there's only $60,000 that was earned. So we don't even know what revenue we're splitting, but we know that they're going to pay the city $500 a month, or $500, what was it again? $500 an event? No, $500...
Per event.
An event, right?
Per event.
Well, it was $7,500, okay? Subtract that away. My concern is only that, of what we don't know, not that what we're seeing is bad. I think a lot of what we're seeing is good, but I just don't think it's ready for primetime.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I would move to table this to a future date.
To a future date uncertain?
I'd second that.
Well, we have a motion by Alderman Segway, and a second by Alderman Newmeyer, and our city attorney has a comment, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor. If the motion is to postpone it indefinitely, that really is going to be the death knell to the matter. If you, if your intention is to postpone it to a date certain, a month or two out, recognizing that time is fleeting, and the weather, hopefully someday gets better around here, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not assuming that anymore, looking out the window. Then it would be better to postpone it to a particular date, and have it be taken off the table at that time, and considered further. Maybe in the meantime, Kylie and the interested groups can, you know, confer more and...
I would amend my motion there to say, March 16th.
March 16th. Alderman Newmeyer, would you second it?
I would concur with that also.
Okay. Any further, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alderman Tierney?
Just, I don't know that we've, I mean, if I were in Kylie's shoes right now, I'm not sure I would feel that I had any direction in what she's supposed to do with this. I'm just, I don't know if there's any way we can give her more direction or not, but it just seems like it's kind of open-ended, thrown right back in her lap, and where are we going from here? That's...
Yeah, that's my concern as well. So I have written down probably no less than 10 different things that have been brought up. So what I'd like to do is send out an email listing those 10 things to this group, and then if individually there's additional concerns that you have, if you could give those to me and Kylie over the next, we'll say, week, or hopefully less than that ideally, we can go from there, and I guess, try to figure out what's the best way to approach moving forward.
Okay. Any further discussion?
What was the date again, that this was being postponed?
March 16th.
Kylie, what can we, what can we provide to you, Kylie, that would give you better direction?
I guess a question that I have for you guys is, what would it take for a group to oversee the beer gardens? What would that, what would that look like from your perspective? I can answer any question you have about 50%, where that came from, what would this look like, every single little detail within that? Is that what it would take, or what would it take to do that?
You know, for myself, I guess, if that 50% is non-negotiable on the part of the Friends group, I mean, I don't know if it is, I assume it is, that's why we would come up with it, then I would be in favor of abolishing the beer garden program altogether, and leaving the open Saturdays to be reserved by an individual group for an event at Upper Lake Park in Shelter 6, that they could hold an event for the public on the Saturday in the summer months. That would be my alternative recommendation or suggestion. I guess I'm just concerned that we had this discussion for an hour, and nothing got decided, or even where we were an hour ago, without being any smarter or more determined.
John, you're the...
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see a sample calculation. Like, that's number one, but number two, I'm not specifically sure of the mission for the Friends of Park Rec.
I can provide the entire bylaws and the mission for the Friends of Park and Rec to all of you guys, and then also, all the details, I guess, on that for you, as well as any other questions. So just if you'd like to come up with... So just if you'd like to come up with all those questions, I, I can definitely answer them, but just a question I have then for, for you guys is like, once I answer all these questions, what, what's the, and like, we have to, not only for, for the Parks and Rec Department, the Friends of Park and Rec, but all 30-plus organizations that are interested in participating in fundraising efforts.
Sorry, let me be clear, I am pro-beer garden. I just think there's a better way that we can handle this.
You're pro-beer. And you like to eat.
I guess, Kylie, I'm going to go back to my one comment before is, for me to feel more comfortable, I understand, you know, Friends of Park and Rec, but we need these other organizations to be more comfortable with what you're proposing. I mean, you know, I know you said you had conversations with them, and most everybody was on board. What we've heard over the past two meetings is that's not necessarily the case. Now, that doesn't mean they didn't change their mind after reading this in a little more detail, but, you know, I think that there's some key elements, cost being one of them, that, you know, if we can get people more embracing this concept, whether it's the city's Park and Rec Department running it, or the Friends of Park and Rec running it, we just got to get those, if, if it's Friends of Park and Rec, we got to get them talking with these groups, and we're not there yet. It doesn't appear to me.
Okay. Deb?
I think, Kylie, I go back to my comment about I versus team. What do the sponsors of the beer gardens, what would it take them to accept a more of a centralized process? If you can work together and form a true team that comes back with something that you agree upon, I think that's a really great starting point.
Yeah, and I, and I definitely did meet with all these groups and, and present it for their feedback of what can we do here and what would you like to see, and it was communicated in that light, and this plan was produced based off of that feedback of who, who was interested and seen it as a collective group. I would say that the groups that aren't in favor of, of this wanted to do their own separate thing and, and go off and do their own separate beer garden, but what has presented to you guys within the last few weeks was based off of all their feedback, not just within the last six weeks or the last few months, over the last three to five years, getting that information from all those groups of what their hardships were, what, what they like to see for better improvements and, and all that. So it definitely wasn't, wasn't lost in the teamwork collaboration of trying to come up with a plan that you guys see today, but it's important to note that I don't think any change everybody's going to be in favor of, and so it's very hard to go to every sing, like, we can definitely go to every single group again and see what would it take to, to do a uniform kind of umbrella or a beer garden event series, and we might get all the same answers in that, or we might get a few points within the details of that to change, but that's important to know that the council can approve the Friends of Park and Rec to oversee the beer gardens, and that would be their, their duties to, to work with all those organizations to make that a successful event, because if we hand it over to the Friends of Park and Rec and they don't work with those organizations and, and most of them aren't on board, this is not going to work, you know? And so it, it wouldn't have been presented to you guys today, today or last meeting without having the support of, of numerous groups within our community. And, and, and I also just want to bring up, too, that I have, within the last couple meetings, or couple weeks, the last meeting, you guys have brought up that 50% quite, quite heavily in that, and what, why is it 50%? And it's reaching out to over 10 municipalities, or 10 communities. I wanted to see, what do you do with fundraising events? How do you run beer gardens? What do you, how do you work with these organizations? And that 50% was, 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 they were like, that's very generous. With most of those organizations that do overarching beer, or beer garden event, take 100% of the proceeds, and they give back to the Parks and Rec Department or the city, or they give back to the Friends of Park and Rec. So it, that 50% split is very generous, and then you also look at, there isn't any beer garden operation within the state that is run, that is, to my knowledge, that is run with, with supporting all these organizations. So it, it's just awesome and unique that we do this for our community, and I think we should definitely continue to do this, and this is an opportunity for us to continue in that fashion. If we go into another direction without, without using the Friends of Park and Rec as a branch to do this, there, we're not going to see a successful beer guard, beer garden series event, or event series. We're going to see individual groups run their own fundraisers. Some of them will be really successful, and some of them will never, never be able to host an event. And so it, it creates a fair, a more fair opportunity, and I, and I guess if that's not the direction that the council wants to go into a collaborative, let's try to support as many, as many efforts as we possibly can, and we want to just let it be where those individual, individual groups do their own fundraising event, and that, that's also the direction we can go. So I just think it's important to know that, that teamwork and collaboration was done to come up with this proposal, and, and we can go back again and go and meet with, with all the groups and, and all the groups that would love to participate in this opportunity as well, to get maybe more supporting, supporting information.
Okay. Did, well, we have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Did you want...
That is to table till March 16th, is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Good.
Did anybody want to hear from Friends of Park and Rec, or you just want to vote on this? We do have a motion and a second. I'm, I'm ready to vote. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye to table till the 16th.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, so, one opposed, Kelsey, okay? The motion passes to table it. Thank you. Now we're in consideration of possible action on concession stand agreement with Port Washington Youth Baseball.
This is an annual memorandum of understanding that the city and the city of Port Washington engages with the Port Youth Baseball and Softball to use the concession stand at the municipal ballfields. The only major revision that we've had to this memorandum would be the license fee. So now the, the Port Youth Baseball and Softball will pay a license fee of $500.
Yes, so the, the, working with the city attorney to redo that section of the memorandum to make sure that it reads correctly of how we are operating the beer garden, or the beer gardens, operating the, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm, I've been talking about beer gardens for way too long over here. So I worked with the city attorney to get the, the verbiage updated and revised to read as we are carrying out the memorandum with the, the youth baseball organization, softball organization.
I'll move to approve. Alvin Platner, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All the woman postal. Further discussion on this one?
Just real, real quick question for Kylie. You've talked with the, with the baseball club, and they're all good with this, or they've...
Yeah, I have talked with them over the last two years, actually, and then we were going to do this last year, but they decided not to run their concession operations for 2000, or 2020. So this was something that they definitely wanted to make sure it was ironed out before this, this season came up.
Okay. Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous, Kelsey, on this one. Okay. Item nine, presentation by Ascend Real Estate Group LLC regarding Cedar Vineyard's mixed-use development.
And...
The highlight of the evening, Tom. Welcome.
Good seeing you, Mr. Mayor.
It's great to see you. I'm glad we got something going on this.
And Mr. Mayor, I have the, the presentation on my laptop.
And the microphone, Tom, there's a little button pressed to go on there. Scott, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, council. My name is Tom Swarthout. I'm with the Highview Group, Lake Forest, Illinois. We're a small community, just like you, right on the lake, about an hour and a half from here. I've been here dozens and dozens of times over the last six years, but I'm here representing the Ascend Real Estate Group out of Chicago, a real estate company that's located basically in the, in the hottest real estate market prior to the COVID on the west side of Chicago, kind of where Oprah's facility is. A lot of activity, and we're just pleased to be here to make this presentation. About six years ago, more than six years ago, I came up here with Nick Patera, and I met with Tom Alata and, and Mark Rams and Randy Tesla, and I think Sean Graff from the Land Trust. I believe Rob was there. I think we went to Harry's, and we talked about the project. And a lot has changed. A lot's changed in Rob's life, too. I think I gave some comments about having more than one child, Rob, and I think he took that advice to heart. So we are thrilled again to be here. This is everything that I've dreamed of, and I think Ascend has kind of embraced that, that dream. We wanted, six years ago, to put in a small residential project that incorporated a vineyard, a winery, open space, and tried to preserve a historic barn. And six years later, I think that dream's going to come true. Mr. Nick Patera will make the presentation, hopefully briefly, because I know it's late, the night's getting late. But Nick was nice enough to call me a few months ago, wanted to introduce me to the Ascend people who had put the property under contract. We met. I think they felt that I could add some real value, and so we partnered up, and here we are tonight. We're going to be happy to answer any questions over the next few minutes, but I will give it to Nick Patera. He's the original land planner and came up with this, I think, really special piece of property. Nick?
Thanks, Tom.
By the way, I just want to introduce both Cal Dennison from Ascend Real Estate, as well as Rob Eschew, who's with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As Tom had said, I've been with the project since its outset, six years ago. My name is Nick Patera, and I specialize in conservation, open space, and residential land planning. This is a real treasure to us. This project and the location is 70 acres. If you would go ahead, thank you for your cooperation with this. We're located just south of town on Lake Shore Road. That green in the middle of the screen is the location of the property, and it's, everything is to the east of Lake Shore Road, except for the vineyard and winery. If you go to the next one, you'll see we're looking at about 70 acres, 74 acres in total is on the east side of Lake Shore Road. That white diagonal stripe is Lake Shore. You can see beautiful Lake Michigan to the right side. I, I cut it off just because I wanted to get a close enough view of the land development. The way that the property is proportioned over the 70 acres is, it's kind of simple. One-third of it is in vineyard and winery. One-third of it is common area, open space, and Lake Shore recreational, and one-third of it is residential lots. So it kind of breaks up very conveniently into, into this 30% area for each of the components. The single-family lots, they're 70, I'm sorry, they're 45 lots, they're, each of them are based on a dimension of 100-foot width, 150-foot depth, but the arrangement of the lots themselves is a super-efficient configuration, but it results in everybody having a view out their back door. Out of the back patio, you're going to either see the lake, you're going to see the Cedar Gorge to the south, or you're going to see vineyards to the, to the west, watching the sunset over the vineyards, watching the sunrise over the lake. This is a pretty idealistic configuration, but it also has great efficiency in using pretty much every linear foot of roadway, so that we don't have inefficiency with resources and roadway network. The roadway itself is a dedicated 60-foot right-of-way. It has sidewalks on one side or both sides, depending on where you are. We also have interconnections with the trail network. There will be a bike trail and a hiking trail that go through the property, so it's a very pedestrian-oriented destination type of a community that we've created. If you go to the next one, and we can come back to any of these, I don't want to belabor this, given the hour. This is about a three and a half, actually four acres, and this is on the west side of Lake Shore Road. The parcel contains the barn, that tan roof on the front, and I'll tell you more about that in a minute. And then what you're seeing that looks like a tuning fork is kind of the interconnected roadway. We're being very careful to make sure that we have a clear and defined intersection at Lake Shore that feeds both that crescent that's on the east side, as well as then on the west side. This has got that kind of goose neck configuration. Why does that look so weird? Because it's actually the green un, un-white area is a reservation, a roadway reservation that's leading to the neighboring property owned by the Tillmans, with the anticipation that that will, at some day and some time, be looking for a, a connection, that we're not going to have multiple octopus legs connecting to Lake Shore Road, but there's going to be a shared connection here. The parking lot that will be accessible to public to connect to the trails will also serve the winery, about 106 spaces, give or take, we have, once we figure out ADA and accessible parking. But the nice thing about it is, what are you seeing from Lake Shore? You're seeing vineyard, you're seeing a restored barn, you're not really seeing a parking lot. It's convenient, but it's not in your face. If you'd go on, please. We've spent quite a bit of time, Tom has, with our talented engineers coming up with the preliminary plat. If you can move through this, we can come back to it if you need to, but it's all been laid out with dimensional proportions. I think there's two of these, if you want to move ahead, but you can see that we've spent time with a pretty detailed engineering plans, and Tom could answer more about the details of the utility connections and grading on these, on these plans. The network of roadway and, and lot configuration has been, and setbacks for each one of the lots have been very specifically delineated. Go ahead, please. Bob, the, the pictures that we have here are some inspiration pictures. Tom has hunted high and low, but the idea of the winery having the Wisconsin barn look to it is pretty appealing, and the idea of having a stone foundation with the lower half being the operational part of the winery, and maybe the front half having a terrace or a patio for people who are gathering, have events or tastings, to be able to look off towards the, to the east, to the vineyards. You can see, if you go through, it will be a little bit more of the same. The idea of having a, Tom, it might not be this airy when we get this done. An air-conditioned barn look here might be something that we, again, have as an inspiration piece. I'd be happy to go back. I, I wanted to kind of keep it brief. This was nine different images with a lot of, of detail, but I'd be happy whether somebody from our team or myself could help answer questions, if you would, please. We also have a date tomorrow night with the Plan Commission, but wanted to at least introduce this, this evening. night with the plan commission, but wanted to at least introduce this, this evening to you. One more thing that you should probably understand is that, and you probably know this already, but everything to the south of the Cedar Gorge is part of the Ozaki County open space. There will be an interconnection to that, so we essentially have another, how many acres to the south?
130.
130 acres of open space to the south. We can't claim it, but we're right next to it. And then there's quite a few acres to the east of this that has that pretty blue water in it. So this is, this is pretty extraordinary piece of property. Thanks, Tom, unless you have something else?
No. Thank you, Nick. And he's correct. We wanted to keep it brief. Couple things. Obviously, we will interconnect the bike path all the way to downtown Port Washington. This does, this project doesn't work without this community, without the, this asset so close to this piece of property. This is the last great piece of property, I think, left near a major city on Lake Michigan. This is just really, we're really blessed to be here tonight again. But we will have this entire piece of property open to the general public. In the past, if, if some of you may recall, the entire Lake Shore was going to be owned by the Lake Ozaki County through the land trust. We will now own the property all the way to the waterline. The land trust will own all the property just to the south of the gorge, in fact, over the gorge. So we've already talked to the land trust, we've talked to the county. Certainly the intent to put a bridge over the gorge, staircase that will interconnect down to the lake, and we certainly intend to have this 100% accessible to the general public. It won't be public land, but it will be privately owned, but like any land trust piece of property, will be open to the general public. And as you can see, there's a walking path around the entire property. It's almost two miles just to walk around this entire 70 acres. So we're very pleased. Nick mentioned the Tillman family. We've been working with them and have agreed to purchase the four acres. Obviously, we're bringing water and sewer to that site. I think it's a catalyst to help redevelop that piece of property in the future. I don't know when that will be. They're terrific people. We've, we've gotten along with both Bob and his brother, and so we're really excited to move this forward. It's been a long pull. Can't thank the Ascend Real Estate Group who actually brought me in and have been just terrific to work with. I think there's been a real great connection. So with that, I'd answer any questions, but we want to just bring it to the public for the first time tonight.
I would just like to thank you, Tom, and your group. You know, I love 45 lots, great density. I mean, it's not over, but it's really nice. How big are the lots approximately?
They, they all are generally about a half acre. They're all 100-foot frontages. I think there's a couple that are not a complete 100-foot frontage. We have already architectural guidelines and, and covenants in place. We want to make sure that landscaping, we're very sensitive about the landscaping, so everybody has those great vistas across, across their neighbor's yard. So we're concerned about that. We don't want to have three-car garages exposed to the front elevation, so you're limited just to one car to be exposed because we want to kind of create homes that are squashed down, more of a, more of a cottagey look, frankly, rather than that big kind of Gone With the Wind Tara look. We really want to have understated homes that really take advantage of those great spectacular views.
Great. Thank you. Alderman Platner?
Nice to see some traction here and we're really excited about this project. I think it's a great use of this land. I'm very encouraged by what you guys are going to bring tomorrow night to plan commission, so thanks.
Alderman Gasper?
Sure. A lot, Highway C is doomed to become a city street in the long term, so with your development, what are you doing that's going to make Highway C feel more constrained like a city street to help slow traffic on it?
Alderman, that's a great question. This is the conflict. As I used to sit in your position as an alderman in our community, the, the cars really do move quite quickly and with the winery on one side of the street, obviously people will want to walk across and obviously people will use that parking lot to go to the preserve. So it's a county highway now. We would love to restrict the, the speed limit to 35 miles an hour. It's out of our control. Also, the county requires turning lanes within their ordinance. It's not really required in terms of our warrants. There's not a lot of traffic, so we think that's not necessary, but that's a process we'd have to go through the county unless the city, in their wisdom, was to take that, that, that responsibility over, but then they'd have to plow it. Rob would have to manage it, and I think that he, at this point, might be reluctant to do that. But I, I concur. It is, it is an issue. We'd love to slow down the traffic, no question. It would be great for the homeowners and I think it would be great for everybody, except for those who want to get to downtown Port Washington quickly.
Well, drivers tend to go what's known as irrational speeds based off of what the feel of the roadway is. And yeah, the county's not going to lower the speed limit for you to 35. But if, if you're, in a more constrained feeling environment, it tends to be easier to get traffic to slow down. So for example, on the west side of Port Washington LL, that is still under county control, but the speed limit's down to 35, but it's wide open because there's no buildings on it at all. So hence traffic, you know, if you find somebody going 35, yeah, I think that's a rare occurrence. Because it, if it feels wide and open, you're not going to slow traffic down. If it feels more urban-y, it's going to slow traffic down. So that, that's my concern on that. You had said that you were going to have more squashed houses, some cottagey type. What square footages are you thinking on these?
We do have an FAR, really basically a four-area ratio, and so we were going to, probably the average size home would be about 3,200 square feet to 3,500 square feet. And I think in today, and I've been building homes for a long time, large, big McMansion types and even smaller homes. Today's furnaces with the, with insulation today, we can put in these small little furnaces that are the size of refrigerators we had when we were in college in the basement, one up in the second level. So you can get a master on the first floor with this design, as well as, because you'll have 70 feet to work with. We have 35, 30-foot side yard setbacks in total. But you can put a bedroom in the basement and two bedrooms up or three bedrooms up. So you can get a four-bedroom home in these, these lots for sure. And the reason I kind of, I'm, I come from an area where people really want to show their success from their front elevation. I don't believe in that kind of philosophy. So when I say squashed down, we put in reverse brick ledges so there's no steps up into your first floor. It's more accommodating for everybody, whether it's ADA or older people. And I think that's what we were looking for. We really want to kind of reduce the height to the, the homes. That would be my personal belief, but it's still America. We'll have a building review board. Nick will be a part of it and they'll, will hopefully kind of make everything consistent.
Okay. Do you have an assumed value on these homes, what range you're expecting them to be?
I think, I think it's, I can frame out the house. I hope to be able to do my last home. So I think we can keep them in the 750 million dollar range.
Okay.
All in.
Do you, do you have a preferred zoning that you're going to seek from the city?
Oh, a single-family zoning. I'm not quite sure, Bob, but it's a...
Same zoning as, the residential zoning will be as what is there now, RS1. Okay. All right. Yeah, thank you. I guess just, this is a comment. Personally, I like more urban-y type environment development than this. I don't care for the large lot stuff. I tend to think that it ends up not being as, it does not end up in the end producing the revenue commensurate with the amount of infrastructure that it generally needs. In a case like this, when you build large homes, you know, if you have average 100-foot right, right-of-way access on them, generally they're not going to use any more, say sewer and water than what a smaller home does, except that they need a couple times as much pipe to support it. Thus, those of us who live in the older areas of the city end up essentially subsidizing this type of neighborhood. And yeah, that's, our code allows it. I just don't see it as being as wise as some others might. And I guess that's my opinion on the matter for now. So that's what I got.
Tom, thank you for persevering. I am probably the remaining member from council. And thank you for persevering and coming back. It's a great plan. Look forward to seeing it come to fruition. Thank you.
Yeah. Doing a quick calculation, we come up with, you know, $30 million, something on around there. So thanks, Tom.
Tom, would you be able to turn your mic on, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And, and I, I think 3,500 square foot home is, is, and that's really first floor, second floor. That's not counting the basement. And I, I think that's really what's in demand today. Whether you're 35 or you're 65, I think that's what people are really kind of looking for. And listen, I come from a town where houses are massive and you can't give them away up until this year. And I think a lot of them are still looking to find buyers. That's just, just one man's view.
I'll just add somewhat, somewhat anecdotally, but also from having sat here for the last couple of years, some of our other recent subdivisions have recently down, actually downsized the minimum home size in them, that they started out larger and they dropped down to about 1,700 square feet. So they, they made the calculation that that's actually what's more in demand in the area. But that's, that market may have changed since then.
Okay, thank you. There were comments, Alderman Benning, and then Alderman Segway?
Tom, can, you know, you alluded to the winery and the barn on the other side. Can you just, I mean, I know there was a plan to have a vitner and, and can you update us on the plans?
Sure can. No, I, I've talked to Steve Johnson over the last week, I believe, and he's still very excited about coming in and participating. People don't know, Steve and Maria Johnson started Parallel 44, Evdor 44 up in Kawani. They're very successful. I think now they may be the number one producer in the state. He's the president of the Wine Growing Association of Wisconsin. He's been a great ally in this project. He's excited because now he'll be able to sell there and that's a big benefit for him. He's, the only issue that I think Steve is dealing with right now is I think the state, not the state, I think it's federal government, might be wrong, might be the state has imposed you can't have more than two locations. And I think the winery association is kind of contesting that. Nevertheless, he's a part of the project. The barn is, there's a couple barns we're looking at right now, certainly the one that the county owns. And that one is, that barn that we showed there is owned by the land trust. And that's up by West, West Bend, north of West Bend. That's a spectacular barn. We have a barn builder who's going to relocate it and relocate it here. And what we'll do is, we will put, skin it, make it fully functional year-round, and that will be kind of the clubhouse for the homeowners as well as event center for the entire community.
Alderman Segway?
Tom, I'm presuming that the, that this project relies on TID 3?
Yes.
Okay. Before you get too far along this time, Tom, let's figure out how we're going to cooperate on that. So that should come to public works, Rob, probably in March. Because the most important thing is how much area will this facility serve? And how much of it are you going to pay for?
Those are great questions. We've already had discussions with city staff on that. And Alderman, you may know this. We've already engineered the project. It's 100% engineered. It's been bid out already. So with the exception of some of the modifications that, just tweaking a little to accommodate the Tillmans' needs in the future, we're there. And then basically, and I kind of kid Rob often, Rob was a real, he was real adamant about sizing or sanitary and water main at the get-go. And because of that, we can accommodate the Tillmans, no matter what kind of density they end up having, as long as it's residential.
Yeah, but if you're a watch, you may want to put sidewalks on both sides of your street.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's not going to happen. Okay. Anybody else have questions?
Well, thank you for the...
Okay, no, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great to see you again.
Yep, handsome. Glad we're finally here and you got everything ready?
It's Jimmy Valvano. Never give up. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good night.
I don't see any new business. Alderman Platner, item 11?
Dance class. We're doing dance class now. I'm not involved. I don't know what I'm doing. I just stand there, but she loves it, so we're doing great.
Do you wear a little tutu?
I do not, but she never takes hers off, so we need to wash it at some point.
Right. There again, like I said, let her, let her go to bed with it. Let her have her tutu on. If it gets damaged, then she's got to know that. So give in to her. Anybody else? Fourth coming events? Okay. Public appearances and comments? Anybody left? Chief's leaving. We have one more soul in the corner there. Nothing? Okay. My favorite part.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This item is not necessary, so we can forego this.
Item 13?
Correct.
Thank you.
There you go. I'll be here to please.
19.85 parent, one parent C? Do I have to memorize that? Okay. Then, I guess, after no public appearance or comments, I would have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Second?
All the woman postal, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you. Okay. Need some help down there?